We welcome you to this forum featuring the candidates running for Robinsdale City Council in the primary election for Ward One. This primary election will be held Tuesday, November 8th from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., the same day and same place as the general election. As we all know, early voting has already started. The two candidates with the most votes in this primary face the voters again on the February 14th special election to determine which one will serve the city council from Ward One. My name is Patsy Green. I am president of the League of Women Voters of Crystal New Hope, East Plymouth, Robinsdale, and I am a resident of New Hope. The League of Women Voters is proud of its history of citizen education in our communities and provides these forums to help you make informed decisions in local elections. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization and the view of the candidates are their own. We do not assume any responsibility for the contents of the candidate's statements. We want to thank CCX Media for their assistance and the city of Robinsdale for the use of their council chambers. This forum is being broadcasted and recorded by CCX Media. The video will be posted by CCXMedia.org and League of Women Voters, Crystal New Hope, East Plymouth, Robinsdale, and on Vote411.org. Only certain media have permission to edit this recording. We ask that no parts or excerpts be taken from the recording and the recording, the video be used only in its full content. With this, I would like to introduce our moderator, Jackie Wells, a resident of Plymouth and a member of the Golden Valley League of Women Voters. Jackie, thank you.
Thank you, Patsy. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the candidate forum for the primary election for Ward One, Robinsdale City Council. All of the filed candidates were invited and we are delighted that they are all in attendance here tonight. Let me introduce our candidates. They are seated in alphabetical order. They are Raymond Blackledge, Lucas Harris, Noah Kolkman, Regan Murphy, and Patrick Naylan. As I said, they're in alphabetical order and they will take turns being the first person to answer each of the questions. This candidate forum has three components. They are the opening statements, responses to audience questions, and closing statements. We have a timekeeper in the front row, so each candidate will have the same amount of time for their responses. The timekeeper will hold up a card when there are 30 seconds remaining and a stop card when the time is up. We ask the candidates finish their sentence and stop at that point. So let's begin with the candidates' opening statements, which may be up to three minutes. And our first candidate to speak is Raymond Blackledge.
Thank you, Jackie. Good evening. My name is Raymond Blackledge. I'm a husband to Laura, a father to Elijah and Evelyn. And one of my reasons for running for, for the city council is an opportunity to not only represent our community in the way it champions voices for others, but also to be heard and allow for people to have their creativity and opportunities to be able to be seen and Robinsdale is an amazing community. I've called this place home for nine years and I've really had the opportunity to see some of the bests, the best of it, and also some opportunities that Robinsdale has as we continue to think about bridging ourselves into the next future. And as I think about how my background impacts and supports some of the work that city council will be doing, I've worked nonprofit for the last over a decade and currently I work as a school advocate, supporting school districts and school, um, commu-, sorry, CNAs, which is a comprehensive assessment, and also working with them on school improvement plans, finding ways in which we can support students and schools to continue to better create opportunities for our students. And as I think about what this means to, to city council, it's an opportunity for me to not only enhance some of, some of my abilities to serve in my community, which I love doing, but also to represent for younger students, younger, younger people as well to who are interested potentially one day in city council and looking into ways in which they can commit to supporting their government. I also sit on Park and Rec Commission currently and have been there for the last two years. And yeah, look forward to, and also, yeah, I also had this as well too. I'm a, I'm a coach at Robinsdale High Schools, been there for the last six years coaching track and field. So I really, really appreciate and really value what Robinsdale is, what it can be, and will continue to be as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas Harris, please.
Hi, thanks, Jackie. Good evening. My name's Lucas Harris and I'm running for, to be your representative for Ward One for Robinsdale City Council. I'm running because I believe that our council should be a little bit more representative of the people who live here in Robinsdale and because I believe it's important to get involved in local government and give back to the community. My wife and I have lived in Robinsdale for also the past nine years, first for seven years in Ward Three and right on West Broadway, and the last two years in Ward One. We love all that Robinsdale has to offer, trails, parks, outdoor amenities, and all the community events, as well as the thriving downtown business district and all of our unique local offerings there. Anytime we run errands or need to leave the house to go pick something up, our first question is usually, can we get this in town? As for my professional background, I'm an architect by education and I've worked for and with general contractors and developers for the past 12 years. I've been a part of teams building anything from medical office buildings to senior living, multifamily apartments, all the way to stadiums. I'm used to working with diverse teams of designers and subcontractors and have a lot of practice identifying constructive solutions when confronted with challenges. While I see many things improved since we first moved to Robinsdale, I believe we also have many opportunities and challenges ahead of us. I know that public safety is a top concern for many of our residents. I also know that the Blue Line extension is a, has drawn both controversy and excitement. While I'm personally in favor of this extension, I know not all of our community shares this optimism, so I'll be working with the Met Council and all of local residents and businesses to make sure that our concerns and priorities are heard, communicated and addressed, including maintaining connectivity, accessibility, and safety throughout and across our neighborhoods. I'd also like to see more investment in our local businesses. The historic downtown core is a major attraction not only to local residents, but to those in our surrounding communities. I'd like to see this success expand further down the West Broadway, uh, West Broadway corridor to revitalize some of the areas that maybe aren't seeing their full potential. I'm asking for the opportunity to serve as your representative on city council to make sure that your voice is heard and Robinsdale continues to be such a great place to live. I believe we all deserve a connected, vibrant, and safe Robinsdale. Thank you for the opportunity to address some of your concerns tonight, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and CCX Media for hosting this event.
Thank you. Noah Kolkman, please.
Hi, thank you tonight for everybody in attendance and also everybody watching on television here and on however this is mediated across. I've been a resident here for 15 years in Robinsdale. I've also lived in Ward Three for nine years and then I had moved to Ward One five years ago, so, or eight, five years ago, yes, sorry. I have a trades background. I've been a fabricator welder for well over two decades now. I help create the cootie built in downtown Robinsdale for the 125th anniversary. I've also helped with the restoration proj-, project with the Terrace Theater light, um, signs. So Robinsdale to me is very, uh, I'm very passionate about the community, everything that Robinsdale has for all our residents and for people visiting our residents or visiting our businesses. Public safety is very important to me due to the fact that we've had some instances just recently with District 281 and Close to Home, even though it wasn't in Robinsdale, it's still in our community. I would really like to see more of a police involvement with the community, with doing neighborhood watches again and having command, uh, block commanders. And so the police and safety can work together, police safety can work together so we can make it a better community for everyone. I am a father of three kids. One is in Plymouth Middle School. I have one at Robinsdale Spanish Immersion, and my youngest is still currently enjoying I've been married for 15 years to my wife, Lisa, and like I said, I just want to be able to serve the community, be the voice of everyone. I am willing to listen and give everyone the opportunity to talk and just be open and honest. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Regan Murphy.
Thank you for the opportunity. Want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, Jackie, for moderating and all the candidates up here. It's wonderful to see an election to have wonderful candidates in, in the city of Robinsdale. Okay, my name's Regan Murphy. I grew up in Robinsdale. I went to Robinsale Schools, graduated from Cooper High School, went to the University of Minnesota from undergrad, and I'm currently pursuing my MBA at Carlson School of Management. Moved back in 2005 with my wife, Chris, and we have three children, Delaney, Mac, and Declan. The two oldest ones are at Armstrong and my little guy's at Sacred Heart where my wife teaches Spanish. When I moved back in 2005, immediately wanted to get back to the community that gave me so much growing up here, so I got involved, kind of like Raymond, in the Park and Rec Commission and eventually Planning Commission, and eventually ran for mayor, and I was mayor for eight years. And during that time, I've been a coach, continue, still am a coach. I've been involved in numerous activities, committees, the Bird Town Half Marathon. It's, you know, I always tell people that Robinsdale is my passion, not politics, and that's what residents can expect from me. There's three things that I'm kind of looking on focusing on, on this campaign, and it comes down to accessibility. It's a beautiful thing about Robinsdale and the small town is the ability to call your council member or call your mayor on the cell phone or run into them in the grocery store and share your opinions and, or issues you might have. You don't get to do that everywhere. So accessibility is really important to me. Advocacy is also very important. If you live in Robinsdale, doesn't matter who you are, but if you live in Robinsdale, I'm an advocate for you and I want to make sure that people enjoy where they live and they are proud of where they live. And the final piece is safety. I don't think anybody will disagree that safety is, is important and everybody cares about that. Everyone should be comfortable at home, when they're shopping, walking down the street. Everybody deserves that and that's something that's very important. And again, we have an advantage in Robinsdale because this is a smaller community with our police department and fire department are very dedicated individuals and we have an opportunity in Robinsdale where we can easily shift and, and adjust to certain things where other larger cities can't. So again, thank you for hosting and I look forward to the rest of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Naylan, please.
All right, thank you very much. And I would like to echo what he's saying. I think the League of Women Voters is an extraordinary organization responsible not only for this, but for a lot of get-togethers that citizens of our country wouldn't have if not for the League of Women Voters. So definitely my thanks are there too. My name is Patrick Naylan. I am a lifelong student of American politics and American history, starting with the Constitutional Convention of 1787 and on down through Harry Truman's, my favorite president. And in everything I read, I look for the human story of what are our great leaders doing for the people directly. Nobody can argue that Truman wasn't like the great president of the people. And this being the first ladder on the rung of politics and of service to the community, you're here, right here, you're looking at the five of us, face to face, eye to eye. You can, you know, get a measure of us, seeing just who we are. I've been involved in community service as far flung as taking people to orphanages in Tijuana to make people in Southern California aware of how dreadful an orphanage can be in Tijuana. You can't imagine how bad that actually was. We were very instrumental in getting a lot of money, getting a lot of medical supplies and help to people down there. I have been canvassing for candidates since I was 16 years old, both sides of the aisle. If I believed in the person, I canvassed for them, I helped them out. In more recent years, more phone calling, phone banking, things like that, community service. I ended up on French television where I was helping to clean up the downtown area following the unrest in April of 2020 and the death of George Floyd. So just being out there canvassing, talking to people, knocking on doors, seeing people face to face, asking them what they like about this city, what they'd like to see improved about this city, that's what I bring along with other, other knowledge that I have, as well as in my various jobs in my career, there's been a lot of team building, a lot of bringing people together, understanding what needed to be done, sometimes giving in, sometimes pressuring, whatever was the right thing to do to get the right job done. That's what I hope to do here. I'm also a homeowner here in the city. It's a wonderful city. I did not know how good it was when I first moved here two years ago, but I've got a tremendous sense of the people here now and I want to do it all that I can, and that's why I'm running for city councilman Ward One.
Thank you. So now we're going to move on to questions from the live audience and those that were submitted in advance to the League of Women Voters email. Candidates will have up to one minute to respond and the order in which they answer the questions will be rotated. And candidates, if you need me to ever repeat a question, feel free to ask me to do so. So on this question, we will begin with Patrick Naylan, and our question is, "The Blue Line Light Rail has been a big topic for a number of years. What is your perspective on the Blue Line Extension?"
All right. First of all, to be very blunt about it, the Blue Line, as I understand it, is coming whether we like it or not. I know that's not what a lot of people want to hear. People want to say, I'd like to change it, not have it here. My belief is that we can hopefully do a lot better than just having it run down Botino, that may be a, you know, past decision and we can't get past it, whatever is possible to do so, I'd like to do that. The ability to use public transportation to be able to sit there and do extra work, to read something, to do knitting, do whatever it is you do, instead of sitting in a car in traffic, which I did way too much in my 35 years living in Southern California, I would have loved to have the ability to have this kind of transportation. I've heard concerns from people about, and to be blunt, people have said, people we don't like, to put it that way, coming into town. I don't see that as being a necessity and I think part of that has to do with better community involvement so that we as a community are making such a strong town that any possible undesirable elements are not showing up here.
Thank you. Noah Kolkman.
Um, I was in favor of the Blue Line when it was going to be running down the BNSF corridor. I'm more concerned about the cost, the hidden costs that Robinsdale may have to face due to the fact of it going possibly down 81. I would like to see possibly more, uh, looking into even doing like a bus fast pass, kind of like what they did with, uh, down in Minneapolis with some of the hotlines. I apologize. It's, um, I think the hidden costs are what concern me the most, is what I think most residents are worried about and all the hidden costs, not just the ones seen.
Thank you. Raymond Blackledge.
Yes, I am in favor of the Blue Light Rail, of Blue Line coming down. I know it's going to happen regardless of how we feel about it, so I'd rather be a part of the conversation than not. And I think there's, there's opportunity to make sure it's a viable resource for Robinsale residents, to make sure it's something that we can utilize that benefits all of us really intentionally. So I'd rather make sure that as we talk about the Blue Line, ensuring that we have the conversation about what, what, what Robinsale needs, what makes, well, how do we make sure that it's something that's accessible by all and for all. I think as well as recognizing that the Met Council wants to offer us an engineer to support and making sure that we know how this will affect Robinsale as well too is really important to know. So this is going to, this is going to affect us for years and really exciting to think about the opportunities that it will bring, but also recognizing that there are some challenges that we have to continue to work through. So I want to ensure that I can help support working past some of those issues and challenges that we might face as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas Harris.
Thank you. Likewise, I am also, as I mentioned, in favor of the Blue Line Extension in general. I have heard a lot of the concerns about whether it would further divide our community, some of the safety concerns, maintaining accessibility for pedestrians, bikers, cars, just kind of maintaining the quality of life that we enjoy here currently. I think that the Blue Line Extension actually offers us a lot of opportunities. There's clearly federal money and state monies there to help improve the existing crossings that we have. So even if it does indeed go down Botino, I would have also preferred the BNSF alignment as well personally, but if that ship has sailed and we don't have that leverage left, we need to make the best of the opportunity that we do have and take advantage of some of those funds to maybe redesign some of the Botino crossings to maintain connections, maintain safety, and improve upon those if at all possible.
Thank you. Regan Murphy.
Thank you. I was involved in Light Rail extensively and was in favor of the original alignment. The new alignment I do have major concerns with, particularly with the recent pandemic and changes in how people get to and from their destination. Data has not been used or gathered to support the current route and it stops after the pandemic and I think that's something that needs to be addressed. That's one piece. This is a tough question for one minute. The other component is unintended consequences and having a, a city council that is going to be able to address those and figure out, you know, as we plan this, that we don't do things that are going to have a lasting effect because once this is built, it's, it's going to be permanent. So that's a piece. And then being able to advocate for Robinsale residents with the Met Council and our state leaders on making sure we leverage certain things to, to get what Robinsale needs and that the sacrifices that Robinsale is willing to make, you know, there is some benefit in return for Robinsale as well.
Thank you. And you will be the first to answer our next question, and that question is about communications. What changes, if any, might you suggest for communications with Robinsdale residents?
It's a great question. Such a key, government communicating with its residents. You know, I happen to be the first mayor with a Facebook page, which sounds weird, but social media is certainly a key in communicating with residents. But I mentioned earlier about accessibility and whether it's being at events or letting residents call you at home is, is key. But I think for, I think City Hall, there's so many different things, you know, whether it's the whistle and, and people not, not understanding why something has happened. And I think the city can always do a little bit better job, and not just the city, but also council members in communicating with residents on what's taking place and also soliciting feedback is important as well. So communication, I think, can be improved with social media and individual council communication.
Thank you. Patrick Naylan.
Yeah, that has been a big part of my canvassing as I'm running for Ward One, has been reaching out to people, asking them questions, getting information on what they're most interested in. My own experience with communication as a citizen with City Hall has been very fruitful. There was an issue with a plumbing issue right out in front of my house, my neighbor and I. We were getting this banging noise every time trucks went down that rattled all the pipes in our house. We got very good feedback. I wish to continue that, expand it. I've written down names of people that I'm going to be reaching out to myself with issues that they have about the city and to follow them up, to let them know that they have a voice. As I mentioned, we're the first rung on the ladder of getting anything done politically. I believe there's improvements to be made for our city website and I'd like to see those done. And if, part of it is just reaching out more to people face to face, hand to hand, and making them aware that we are here.
Thank you. Lucas Harris.
So right off the bat, I'll say that I have noticed a lot of improvement over the summer. I think everyone here has had their experiences with the sanitation and waste pickup. The communication has forced the city already to adapt and get more, more communicative, more transparent. Just the other week, I noticed that the city had effectively reactivated its Instagram account as another method. I've repeatedly seen feedback that not everyone has Facebook. People are not getting major updates from the city on Facebook because they don't have access. And that goes to, you know, people who live in town who maybe don't even have internet or access to a computer. So how do we reach those people? How do we keep communication consistent and open and, and available to all of the residents of Robinsdale regardless of format? So additional technology methods, social media is obviously a good way to saturate a, a message out to the community, but also just visibility and, and having those forward, in the forefront and present.
Thank you. Raymond Blackledge.
Yes, one thing that I've found canvassing out in Robinsale Ward One specifically is that we have a really rich, dynamic community hub. So there are places and spaces where we have residents who are connected and very well-connected. And my, my thought and vision as well too, along recognizing that there's been a lot of communication that has shifted and evolved within Robinsdale, but knowing that we have those spaces, why are we not using those as opportunities to communicate more so with people? We have really tight-knit communities and really tight neighborhoods. I want to definitely tap into those resources as well too and be able to communicate with those individuals as, as a, as a space of, of communication as well too, as we continue the different formats that we already currently have. So that's just an area that I think that we can, now I have to really do any work for it, but this will be able to reach out and connect with those neighborhood hubs that are currently existing here in Ward One to say, hey, how can we better connect and make sure that you have the information that you need? Miscommunication has been a, been an issue as you, as we, as we all know, and I would like to be the first person to point of contact to be able to say, hey, reach out to me, I want to get the information to you to make sure that we have the right stuff going on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Noah Kolkman.
I would agree, there's always opportunities, no matter what you're looking at with either Facebook, Instagram. Social media is probably the easiest platform for most cities, but yes, we do have residents that don't have access to internet or computers. So I would like to see, like I said, with neighborhood, neighborhoods as being able to have a hub, like Raymond was saying, and a lot of people have kind of like the head of household on the block, like this is where, you know, everybody knows this person. Having, going out to these blocks, talking to the people and actually being out there for the people to listen to their concerns, instead of just doing it through social media, actually going out there to meet, talk, and enjoy each other's company and have the actual hardest questions and the hard discussions.
Thank you. And you will be next for our next question. If you would please give us your thoughts about public safety in Robinsdale and any suggestions you might want to implement.
Like I stated in the beginning, I would like to see more neighborhood watches and block leaders to work along with the police and public safety to make our community a lot better. It all comes down to, we're all one, Robinsdale, and we are together. And to make this a better community, we have to work together. That's the, you know, that's kind of my biggest thing. I've got kids in school, I've, we've have a lot of different school districts dropping buses off in our neighborhoods. Like I said, I think communication maybe is the biggest thing and being there for one another.
Thank you. Raymond Blackledge.
I think, we think about safe communities, one thing I think about is how well-connected are you to your neighbors? I think as we look at neighbors and knowing who's around us and who, who our people are in our spaces, I think that's a huge opportunity there to just make sure people are aware of what's happening, what's going on in their community. So as we talk about safety and the communication aspect, I agree with you, Noah, there is, there's opportunity there for us to make sure that we're aware of what's happening and what's going on. And so I know, I do know that if people feel welcomed and you have opportunities to connect with people individually, there's more safety in your neighborhood based on the fact that there is somebody or something that's going on that you're, that you might be unaware of. A friendly hello, reaching out, connecting with somebody on a personal level allows them to be seen, heard, and valued. So my one thing is, as long as people see, are feeling, seen, heard, and valued, that will help create safer neighborhoods for us as well too. Thank you.
Thank you. Regan Murphy.
Thank you. So public safety, I think everybody up here has mentioned how important it is, and the, the real key is the connectivity between our police department and our community. And you mentioned neighborhoods are absolutely key because they're their eyes and ears for our police department, which cannot be everywhere all the time. The key is, and then is understanding how to relay that information to the police department and also for the police department to stay connected to the residents, to, you know, share information and, and help them work together. There's a number of different opportunities, like the Citizens Academy that the police department has, a lot of people don't know is available. And the other thing is, is residents' involvement in shaping our police department because they do represent us. So there hasn't been a lot of citizen involvement in our police department, how we hire, how we recruit, because our police department should be reflective of our community. In order to do that, there should be citizen input.
Thank you. Patrick Naylan.
I think the greatest bulwark against crime and unsafety in a community is the community itself. In the time that I've been here, the first year I was here, moved during the pandemic, we didn't have whiz bang days, but this year I've been able to partake in whiz bang days and the Chamber of Commerce, the National Night Out, because I was running then. I went from neighborhood to neighborhood to neighborhood, usually ending up at Crystal because I didn't know where things ended, but trying to get to as much of Ward One as I could and seeing how close people were. My first week moving in, my next door neighbor came home, introduced, came over, introduced himself, and we became friends. I've met many people and seen many areas where people have that kind of closeness and community, and that speaks to a lot of the neighborhood watch. And then again, to have people that involved with the police and fire department, it's all just, you know, kind of homogenous thing of bringing the community together to make a stronger community.
Thank you. Lucas Harris.
Thank you. So as you pretty much heard, there, I agree, there are really two factors that contribute to public safety. One is obviously the neighborhoods themselves, the community getting to know each other. We moved a couple of years ago. getting to know each other. We moved a couple of years ago, right in the first few months of the pandemic, into a new neighborhood, and our neighbors were nothing but incredibly welcoming and friendly. And the National Night Out is a fantastic way to get to know your block, to get to know the people around you. So leveraging that, having more events like that, whiz-bang days is fantastic, the downtown, you know, festivals that we have. But secondly, Robbinsdale is a small town. We have, we're a little bit more nimble, we're a little more agile than some other bigger cities to work directly with our police and fire departments that we're lucky enough to have our own services for here, to work with them and improve those policies and improve awareness and just get more engagement with communities and those services that we have here.
Thank you. You may sense a pattern. Lucas Harris will be first on our next question. Random numbers are weird. Okay, so Robbinsdale is a diverse community. Are we a welcoming community, or can we do better?
I think we can always do better. I have personally found Robbinsdale to be very welcoming. We are part of a large metropolitan area. We are surrounded by other very diverse communities. So I have, again, from a somewhat position of privilege, have indeed found Robbinsdale to be a very welcoming place. But I think obviously there is always room for that improvement, whether it's just getting to know your neighbors, saying hi to that new family that moved in across the street, and just reaching out to people who you don't recognize, who you haven't seen in your neighborhood before, and greeting them with a smile rather than a question. Just understanding where everyone's coming from and trying to find that common ground. And I think that's really where it starts.
Thank you. Regan Murphy?
Thanks. The demographics have changed significantly in Robbinsdale since the last census. I've been here most of my life, and I do feel Robbinsdale is a welcoming community. But things have changed. A lot has changed. And I think we also need to change. There's some changes that can be made, particularly in how we interact with one another and doing less on social media and more face to face. And I think that starts with a council member. And it could be something like, you know, going into a business that you might not frequent. It's inviting people to participate, whether it's on a commission or it's to apply for a job on the volunteer fire department and not relying just on social media. But I think that's how you make it more welcoming and what we can do a better job is for those people that are here that might not be from here, is making it more personal to, and I think that's the key to really showing how great Robbinsdale can be and how we can improve on, I guess, communicating with new residents.
Thank you. Patrick Naylin?
America used to be known as the great melting pot. The thought was that everybody from every community, every country and religion, we came here and we all became Americans. That shifted during the seventies to what became the Great Mosaic, which I think is a much better representation, a much more beautiful way. Here in our town, with many others, we have so many different diverse communities. We should foster and we should support and we should all show up for, say, a Thai festival, a Hmong Chinese festival, various things of different religions and all like that, so that people can see other people and realize whoever you are, wherever you came from, however you pray, and whatever your culture is, we have things in common. We laugh, we share times with family, we share foods, we share enjoyment. And in doing that, that again helps to pull together the community, to make us a stronger and more intelligent and to raise better children within our community.
Thank you. Noah Kolkman?
We can't fool ourselves. There's always opportunities to be better. I think we're, like, I agree with everyone up here so far with their statements. It's true. I mean, we can do better. We are getting more diverse as a, as a city and as a state and as a country. We're all diverse. I think Robbinsdale does have opportunities. Every city has opportunities. And I just don't know exactly what will help, but I'm willing to listen, to hear what people have to think, what they think would help our city out becoming more diverse and better place to live.
Thank you. Raymond Blackledge?
Jackie, could you repeat the question?
Sure will. Robbinsdale is a diverse community. Are we a welcoming community, or can we do better?
So yes, Robbinsdale is a diverse community. I think along with everybody else as well too, recognizing the opportunity to do better when it comes to be more welcoming. And that's where I go when we talk about knowing your neighbors, knowing those who are around you, knowing and supporting your fellow neighbor. It's really important to know who these people are, but also visitors. I think there's one, there's been many conversations I've had around people who have visited Robbinsdale who might look like myself and/or others who don't feel that welcoming environment as well too. So I think we have to acknowledge and recognize that there's some conversations that we need to continue to have in Robbinsdale so that we continue to move forward. And really challenges notion of the other. I think the opportunity to really centralize that from the city council is an opportunity to continue to grow our community and charter us into the next, this next generation of Robbinsdale. So I would love to be able to talk more about that. I know a minute is not enough to talk about welcoming and welcoming spaces and what we can do differently, but hopefully you understand a little bit where I'm coming from.
Thank you. And following our pattern, you're first on our next question. Members of a city council do not always agree. How do you work with someone you disagree with to hopefully come to an agreeable resolution?
So in my experience, disagreements are a part of growth and learning. And so I think it's important to be able to have differences of opinion because that's where you get to learn and grow from that. So the biggest thing I think is, as you come to conclusions, what is best for the community, what is best for the people of Robbinsdale, what is best for how we move forward with this issue. So it's coming to a consensus, coming to some idea around what that looks like for the greater good and not just individual, not individual need, because one thing I do know is that we don't know everything. And the whole purpose is to be able to listen, talk to our community, and come to a general consensus that's best for everybody to move forward. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Naylin?
I read a great deal about this in history of America and world history regarding politics. And when you read about the great stories, one that comes to mind is the Constitutional Convention of 1787, how they hashed out this convention with 55 people from the 13 different known colonies. And there was horse trading and there was, you know, backroom dealing and things like that. You have to learn to see what is the greater good for the community, understand that there are times when your particular take on something may not be the very best. But I think the main thing is to look people straight in the eye and fully listen to what they're saying and then fully express yourself in what it is and then ultimately come to what may not be yours and it may not be theirs either, but so long as it's the best for the community, that's what you need to do.
Thank you. Regan Murphy?
Sure, thanks. I think that the key is respect, is respect for each other up on the city council. And from there, then listening. As mayor for eight years, the one thing, I always try to speak last and to make sure I listened and understood everybody's viewpoint. And then the main key is remembering as council members that we all have the same goal, which is to take care of Robbinsdale, take care of its residents, and make it a better place to live.
Thank you. Noah Kolkman?
Can you repeat the question, Jackie?
Sure. Members of a city council do not always agree. How do you work with someone you disagree with to hopefully come to an agreeable resolution?
I would have to agree with Murphy on that. Being able to have a conversation, well, listen is the biggest key thing, is listening to what the community wants, listening to what is best for Robbinsdale. And also, if you have an disagreement, working together, yes, you may, if one person wins and the other doesn't, you're going to have spite. A true agreement is where both parties agree, even though it might be best for both, but it's what's best for the city.
Thank you. Lucas Harris?
This one sounds like my day job. I work with a lot of subcontractors on construction projects where you can imagine there are a lot of disagreements. But at the end of the day, you basically just have to remember you're working to the same end goal. So much like Regan and Noah have already said, remembering that, you just have to keep in mind what the big picture is, what's everyone working towards? Generally speaking, we want the same thing. Anyone up here, we're all looking for the same thing, trying to make Robbinsdale a better place to live. So understanding the end goal and then working backwards to understand better what others' motivations are. Why do they feel the way they do? Why does it differ from how you feel? And maybe it's just a methodology disagreement. So understanding where it started and remembering we're all trying to get to the same place.
Thank you. And you get to be first again. Housing is a big issue in many communities. Please comment on the housing stock in Ward One.
Yes, that's, Robbinsdale, actually about a third of our population rent rather than own. So there are a lot of apartments. Most of the new apartments and development is actually outside of Ward One specifically. But housing is a national crisis right now. There is a massive shortage in affordable housing. And I don't just say affordable as in low-income housing, purely affordable housing for families to own somewhere safe and comfortable to live with their children, with their significant others. So that's definitely an area where we need to examine the available housing stock within Robbinsdale, what our population looks like, what is accessible, and how much it costs those families to live.
Thank you. Noah Kolkman?
I think with affordable housing and I, yes, I know we have a lot of rental properties in Robbinsdale and a lot of renters. I think we, as a city, could look at possibly finding ways to use federal grants or funding to help with costs for new families and new rental property, or new renters to be able to afford to live in our city and within our district.
Thank you. Raymond Blackledge?
Affordability in housing is also something to talk about, access to housing as well too. So I think recognizing that the access that everyone gets to have for housing is also valuable. I know Robbinsdale, like you said, is renters, and I think that's important to recognize. And ensuring that it remains reasonable for people to live here as well too is really important. So I think looking at ways to supplement some of those renting, or supplement some of the housing opportunities for people to be able to gain access is really important. And recognizing that there are houses available. And Robbinsdale has a lot of starter homes, if I'm not mistaken. Recognizing to the homes for families. And there are growing families as well too. So I think it's a great place for starters and being able to get in. But there has to be more opportunity to make sure that we have affordable and accessible renter, or accessible housing dwellers for people to move into as well to feel comfortable in that.
Thank you. Regan Murphy?
Thank you. So Robbinsdale has probably more affordable housing than any inner ring suburb. And for the size of Robbinsdale, we have a pretty amazing range of housing, especially with the new apartment complexes, which we hadn't had new ones since the sixties. I think what Robbinsdale, what makes Robbinsdale special is certainly the residents and allowing them to plant their roots here in Robbinsdale. So whether they rent or own, it's great to have people stay, start a family if they choose, and stay and get embedded in the community. So I think it's important when it comes to housing is that we maintain our housing stock. There's a number of ways to do that with various programs for upkeep. And then be cognizant of, for light rail, if it does happen, there's going to be a push for a lot of high-density housing. And council needs to be involved and residents in shaping what that looks like because it will have a significant impact on the community.
Thank you. Patrick Naylin?
An important aspect of housing that is not usually looked at is the safety of the housing itself. When I was helping a friend of mine who is running for city council in Ward Three, who unfortunately didn't make it past the primary, we went into a number of housing complexes there, and I haven't seen such as yet in Ward One, but I haven't covered all of Ward One, where there was no external safety. The doors going in from the streets had no locks on them and they were not being repaired. We went into places where, and I kid you not, doors had no doorknob, simply a hole in the door where there's supposed to be one. They had a Haspin staple and a padlock or a combination lock to lock their house when they left, presumably the same thing inside, which is a tremendous safety fire hazard on the inside. I would like to see a renters' commission formed in which it's a reach out to the people who rent within Robbinsdale to make certain that we are providing safe and equitable housing to all at good prices.
Thank you. And you get to be first for our next question.
Saw that coming.
I know. It's kind of weird, these numbers. Anyway, please give us your thoughts about a potential new community centers, including is it needed? How would it be paid for? Where might it be located?
As for where it might be located, I really couldn't say. I understand that there are areas that have been considered. I wasn't expecting this question. But anyway, as far as do we need a community center? Yes. We've talked so much about community, about building community, about strengthening the community. I have a long past in theater, community theater, in, back when I was in California, and I've done other performing. Community theaters where people come in and see local productions, their children, their family members, others, their acting and their, you know, behind the scenes. Great way of getting people together. It's a great way of having a venue that can be booked for weddings, for special occasions, for hiring in professional performers, the different types to come in. I believe these things are usually done with some sort of a bond measure to create it. I think that it mainly starts with the desire to have the community theater in the beginning and a lot of very vocal people crying out for it.
Thank you. Noah Kolkman?
Yes, I believe the city of Robbinsdale should have a community center. Or I know we use the police station's basement as a community center, but it'd be nice to see an actual space dedicated for a community center, for another form of revenue for the city, to be able to do upkeep and opportunities to grow for the city and public safety. So.
Thank you. Lucas Harris?
I think a community center would be a great addition to Robbinsdale. I know a number of residents have mentioned missing the old St. Petersburg, that is where Parker Station Flats is now. So having some sort of, not only an informal gathering place where kind of an impromptu neighbors can go out and have sort of their own event, but something more like Patrick's describing as well, some more of an event-oriented space where there could be presentations or whether there are theater, you know, performances, something that's going to be able to be used consistently, not just maybe for intermittent birthday parties or something, but something that can actually bring more communities together, more of the neighbors, neighbors together rather, and see regular use. I would hate to obviously look into an addition to Robbinsdale that would go underutilized.
Thank you. Raymond Blackledge?
So I think of community centers, I think of a space and a place for young people and people to continue to grow, develop, and be able to live. And so I'm thinking of that. I think a community center would be awesome in Robbinsdale, as you think about spaces and places for young people. One question I have asked the young people as I've been out walking around canvassing is, what do you need here in Robbinsdale? And the response is a community center. And with that response also comes a place to work as well too. And so I think not only is that an opportunity for us to continue to meet our needs for our young people who's there asking for this, but to also employ them as well too and provide spaces for them to continue to grow and develop. So I would totally be in favor of a community center. I think that there should be an opportunity for us to look at spaces that would be viable for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Regan Murphy?
100% yes. Robbinsdale needs a community center. It's the best part of my childhood. It was, you know, a place to swim, play basketball, meet friends. It's a meeting room for League of Women voters. Right now, there's no space in Robbinsdale. Did you know the Robbinsdale ambassador has to have their dinner in another city because there's nowhere to host it in Robbinsdale? Did you know the Lions, the Robbinsdale Lions have to host their dinners in other cities because there's no space in Robbinsdale? There's no space for the youth, you know, growing up to play basketball, ping pong, whatever it might be. So 100% in favor. Where it is, I think that's going to be up to the residents when they decide and help kind of shape what they want in the community center, because I think these are all great ideas. How's it get paid for? It's probably going to be taxes, but there's also state bonding opportunity. There's this wonderful City New Hope that has this beautiful new pool and park. They partnered with the state to get bonding for that. But there's other partnership opportunities, say with the YMCA, to have a shared space that has, you know, workout facility and then community rooms.
Thank you. Let's see, and you'll be up for our next question. What are some of the challenges that you see for Ward One and how might you address them?
I think probably one of the biggest challenges continues to be safety, and that's probably always going to be a challenge, understanding that we live right next to the largest city in the state, and we have a very small police department. So we have big city challenges with a small city budget. So being creative and again, the partnership with the So being creative, and again, the partnership with the police department. We have a new police chief, so there's opportunity there. And a lot of new residents, and tapping into the newer residents and getting them involved. The great things about Robbinsdale, for example, like Whatabang Days does not happen without volunteers. And I think these, some of the newer generations are not volunteering as much as some of the older generations. So I think tapping into the residents to help shape public safety is going to be key.
Thank you. Lucas Harris.
So Ward 1, looking at the map here on the wall, is somewhat unique in Robbinsdale. We're divided by not just Botino, which some of the rest of Robbinsdale is, but Highway 100 as well, as well as the railroad tracks, the BNSF railway. So when we talk about a divided community, we are very literally, physically divided from some of the rest of the pockets of Ward 1. So with that comes a major safety concern, how do pedestrians, bikers get around? What do the intersection controls look like? I know there have been a couple of incidents locally where, you know, bikers were either hit, pedestrians had close calls with cars. I know personally speaking myself, I ride my bike to work. It's often a little bit dicey crossing some of the major intersections. So connectivity and safety, a major issue within our Ward 1. And that's not just the public safety concerns, but the actual getting around our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Patrick Nayland.
Challenges come from existing situations in a community. We are right now building a new water tower, which is going to be a tremendous help to the city. And that begets the need for improvement of our infrastructure as far as our pipes underneath the ground, leading to all the houses, sewage and things like that. My house was built in 1927. I have a lot of very old cast-iron pipe. We're going to have a new water treatment plant, and that, of course, is hopefully going to provide us with water so clean that we can all get rid of our water softeners and just go with what's coming straight from there. But it's still flowing through all these very old pipes, and that could add some issues to the water as it finally gets to us. I think we should be coming into a more 21st century approach to greener environment, solar power wherever possibility, lower-power streetlights and other things throughout the city, and of course, better power infrastructure as well, too.
Thank you. Noah Kolkman.
Can you restate the question again, Jackie, please?
What are some of the challenges you see for Ward 1, and how might you address them?
For Ward 1 challenges, we are with physical, I mean, like, sorry, like was said, we have Highway 100 dividing us, we have 81 dividing us, we have railroad dividing us. Public safety is a very big concern with bike paths, walk paths. I know I've seen many people, almost pedestrian-wise, trying to cross 42, 42nd, where there is a crosswalk, but there is no warning light saying someone's crosswalking. So there's opportunities to make the city safer and working with the county and the city to make public safety priority.
Raymond Blackledge.
Yes, I agree with what was said by many candidates, but thinking about, I think, access to sidewalks, access to bikeways that are safe as well, too. I agree, there is a need for that. I'm thinking intentionally around one space in particular near Gracier Park that connects us to the city of Crystal, that my children and I bike often. And there's no safe passage there. There's no way to get there safely to hit in downtown Robbinsdale. So it's always a guess and a luck of the straw if we can get there safely. Also thinking about, a few people I've talked to while canvassing, recognizing there is a shortage of lights in some spaces, so it makes it dark in areas where there should be some light, so we can be able to see at nighttime. I know this is something that was brought up to me, I feel from residents, I want to make sure that we talk about light safety as well, too, and making sure there's clear pathways ways as we move through our city as well.
Thank you. This one begins with Noah Kolkman. The questioner says, "I've lived in Robbinsdale for eight years and have never seen a city employee of color. What do you suggest, if anything, to change this, since the view is that employees don't represent the whole community?"
That is a very difficult question, because I don't know the answer. It really comes down to people applying for positions. People, it really comes down to people. If people want to do the work and being able to do the work, they should be able, I mean, I believe we do have a person of color in one of the wards representing Robbinsdale, so, and it is a female. So I think there's plenty of opportunities.
Thank you. Raymond Blackledge.
Recognizing that this has always been an issue in many spaces and places regardless, I think that one way in which you can make it more of an invitation and be more personal as far as inviting people of color onto certain aspects of the city, I think the one thing is accessibility. How do you get jobs? Where are these jobs being posted? How are we creating connections with people who might be interested and have the ability, have the skills to do these jobs? I for one know that, I've asked this question a number of times in different formats, in different ways, and the conversation is, we don't know where to find people. Well, I can tell you what, they exist. People are very moral capable, but I think it's also how do you find places, how do you find the right places to advertise for these jobs is really important. And I do know that we do have Sheila Webb, who does sit on the city council currently, but that is not reflective of our community in the whole. We think about city works and where we have opportunities for jobs to be available for everybody. So how do we create spaces for people to feel welcome to those jobs, to apply to that space? Which goes back to our welcoming community in Robbinsdale.
Thank you. Regan Murphy.
So we do have persons of color in city hall, not specifically on public works. And that's been a recent change, and part of it is changing in how we recruit and where we recruit. And being, I mentioned this before, more personal about it. For example, and I work in various hospitals, and I would often bring my mayor-at-the-time business cards and would invite individuals to apply for jobs and sharing it in unconventional ways, because we have an unconventional issue that needs unconditioned, excuse me, unconventional solutions. So the city can do a better job, and it's aware of it, but there's still work to be done there.
Lucas Harris.
Yeah, if, I'm not familiar with the exact data of everyone who works for Robbinsdale, but that certainly indicates a problem, and likely starts with recruitment. We're not looking in the right places. We're not branching out consistently. Maybe we need to be looking outside our immediate area. I find that probably isn't the case, given the demographics of Robbinsdale. I think there are a lot of qualified people that would be happy to do those jobs, but perhaps we're not reaching out to the right individuals. And to tag on to what Regan mentioned earlier, I think it's not just the city staff itself, but our police force, our fire as well, fire response. All of those are opportunities to help kind of diversify and make sure that those people that are serving on those services and working for the city represent the city that they are serving.
Thank you. Patrick Nayland.
In the chain of command that is a city, we are part of it. The city council is here to advise, and we advise city manager, not that I'm passing the buck on to anybody else, but we are also fed into by the city commissions. I personally am currently on the Human Rights Commission. And so it is their job, our job, to reach out to the community and find the people who need the representation, as well as to assist the city managers and others in letting people know, here are the positions available. It's just one example, during the last few months, when I've been attending city council meetings, we discovered that, I think, Waste Management, which we've been having some difficulty with, they've been having difficulty hiring people at, gosh, close to $100,000 an hour jobs in some ways, in some areas, and jobs with assistance for family members and getting, you know, college funds and things like that. We're in a difficult housing market right now, but that doesn't mean that we can't do better in terms of reaching out to the right people that we want to expand our people.
Thank you. This next question will be, go to Regan Murphy first. What do you think could be done, if anything, to continue business development in Robbinsdale?
That's a good question. You know, certainly one thing that makes Robbinsdale unique is our locally-owned and operated businesses. And, you know, the vision has always been on West Broadway to create kind of a bookshelf with Hy-Vee, 36th Avenue, and 46th Avenue is the other end, and kind of work on the bookends and work in the middle. The key is being proactive. This is something I have a lot of experience with, particularly with Hy-Vee and some of the other businesses, is that we, when we have vacant storefronts traditionally, you just kind of wait until they get filled up. I'm a firm believer that is not how it should be done. City council has a lot of influence on building relationships and recruiting the businesses that the residents often want, whether it's a coffee shop or a bike shop. So being proactive, developing relationships with developers and entrepreneurs is how we can continue to make Robbinsdale's business district grow.
Thank you. Lucas Harris.
I love the sound of a bike shop in downtown Robbinsdale.
Been working on that one for a while.
I agree. The West Broadway Business Corridor is the pride of Robbinsdale. There's Hackhamuelers, well, it's, you name it. We have a whole line of fantastic locally-operated businesses there. And I think with the last couple of years, business has been really hard on a lot of those local business owners. So it's on us to seek those operators out and work with them to provide those opportunities. We have a lot of space really between those bookends, as you described them, between Hy-Vee and our existing business corridor for a lot of improvements, a lot of available space or space that could be improved upon for businesses that are just starting up or just starting to recover.
Thank you. Raymond Blackledge.
Yeah, I agree. That's, that makes the most sense. I do think also, when we think about businesses, is how are we recruiting people of color to Robbinsdale as well, too, to think about businesses and what they, how they can bring that to, bring it to our spaces as well, too. There's a lot of dynamic space, opportunity there. And I think as businesses continue to come, that's going to be one thing that we need to do to stay relevant as a community as well, too, and also ensuring a welcoming environment, so, along with Regan. And what Lucas said, I think there's also something we can make sure we have in consideration as we continue to move forward. A welcoming environment goes a long way.
Thank you. Patrick Nayland.
I would say that the reach-out to the community, which seems to be answered to so many of the issues that we're talking about tonight, is a great way of reaching out to different people's communities, different ethnicities, different religions and others, because through this, people find out that Robbinsdale is a place that welcomes and celebrates and encourages diversity. During the summer months, we have that wonderful in the park, where we go down there and all the tents are set up and things are there. And we get a number of very small and diverse-owned businesses at that, which are, okay, it's great to go down there on a Saturday morning, but hey, if that were a brick and mortar, or perhaps we had some sort of a structure in which people were renting portions of stalls, something like that, to be a regular business and not just a, on the weekend, haul it down and get it set up there.
Thank you. Noah Kolkman.
If you look at the bookends, there's, there is space, but there's not a lot of space. And I think there's ways to utilize this space better, with that's with redevelopment or reaching out to the owners of the malls. I know the one mall where Bill's Gun Range is, is usually, there's always, seems to be some kind of vacancies. So trying to find ways to bring in other businesses that are able, like small businesses, you know, having a space to air, a space to rent, and a space that is cost-effective and not to the point where they can't afford rent.
Thank you. So this will be our last question before we do the closing statements, and we begin with Patrick Nayland. And our question is, what changes, if any, do you suggest for the city's parks and trails?
I've not spent a lot of time in the parks and trails, or the trails, I should say trails. I have wandered around in a few of the parks. One of the ones I happened to go through several times had a really nice playground, but not a lot of picnic tables. In fact, I had only one picnic table. And I've been to a couple of other parks, just viewing them and things like that. I'd say the main thing is to make our parks very amenable and welcoming to people to have parties. Yeah, I know, this isn't Southern California. We've only got so many months during the year, we can have a picnic out there. But I would definitely say that they have places for the kids to play, places for picnics and birthday parties and things to be held. These are the things that build community memories, family memories. Oh my gosh, yeah, remember that one? Look at the picture on Facebook of that particular time. And so in doing this, this feeds into so many other things. It strengthens the community. It makes us a more desirable place to live.
Thank you. Noah Kolkman.
I think of the pavilion that was built at Terrace Park. You know, it's such a beautiful place. Everybody, you know, it's a nice place to congregate. Not, why don't we have that at more playgrounds and areas in Robbinsdale, like Triangle Park, having a place to go under an eve and have a dinner or picnic tables? Same thing with like the park by my house, Kelly Park. They have a huge open spot that could be utilized for so many things. Bike paths are always a positive to get more people biking, walking around. So accessible, accessibility is a big thing, too.
Thank you. Raymond Blackledge.
So one thing that's, Park and Rest Commission, for what you've been talking about, is design a fitness park, a space for people to come and go to that's accessible for many people. So kids can use it, adults can use it, it's Spanish for everybody. So thinking about that being a viable option for Robbinsdale as well. And the one thing that I know, talking, in talking to and also visiting parks, they're not as connected as they could be. So how do we create pathways and opportunities for them to be easily accessible from one park to the next? I know that's an overhaul of some of the system, but I think that's a need as well, too, because then we can visit multiple parks with then one ride or one trail. So how do we create park systems that are connected and interconnected somewhere? Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas Harris.
I have to admit, on this one, I'm a little jealous of Wards 3 and 4, with the amount of green space. There are Victor Memorial Parkway. Ward 1 is actually a little bit light on green space comparative to a lot of Robbinsdale, which has fantastic parks and trails. I use the trail system a lot, my wife uses the trail system a lot. We bike, we run, we walk the dogs all the time. And they're fantastic amenities. The trails are great. We do connect to, you know, the Grand Rounds Trail, which is a major bike network that goes through most of the Twin Cities. But there's a lot of room for improvement. As Raymond mentioned, there's not a lot of connectivity between some of those, and you kind of have to hop onto roads and some areas that aren't lit very well, aren't very safe. There's cars speeding by, and you don't have a whole lot of space, whether you're walking, running, biking. So room for improvement in lighting, connectivity, and just sprucing up the spaces that we do have, making sure that they're taken care of. Unfortunately, I have noticed a fair bit of graffiti and just kind of litter in some of the parks that we do have, so making sure that places that we currently have are kept up.
Thank you. Regan Murphy.
This is something I'm certainly passionate about, and proud to be part of, a partnership that was instrumental in creating with Three Rivers, which before had never donated any money to Robbinsdale. So our trail system probably over-doubled within the last eight years, including repairs to the boat launch down at Twin Lake. So in the capital improvement plan, parks often get a kind of push to the wayside for other projects. So the key is being creative and building partnerships to fund the parks that people want. And we want all these different amenities, and it's a challenge in doing that. So we have to get creative there, and I'm always a big proponent of doing things different. You know, not the same park and, you know, swing and slides, but doing things different that people in those neighborhoods want. But it's also advocating for additional green space. There's a space on 36th and 100 where we normally dump snow, that that land has been transferred from Mendott to the city. We could build houses, or we could create a new park. So there is room for additional parks in Ward 1.
Thank you. Candidates will now have up to one minute for their closing statement, and we will begin with Regan Murphy.
All right. Well, again, a quick thank you to everybody that attended tonight and the legal women voters. Volunteer work does not go unnoticed. Thanks for hosting this. And I can honestly say, as a Ward 1 resident, that I'd be happy and honored to have any of you represent Ward 1. I know some of you are more than others, and some we just met tonight, but great characters. And so I'm very proud as a Robbinsdale resident and residents in Robbinsdale. Should be proud to have a great selection of candidates. Again, Robbinsdale is my passion, not politics. Got a lot of experience in advocating for Robbinsdale, its businesses, its residents, and I'd like to its businesses, its residents, and I'd like to continue to do so. I think leadership is key, accessibility, and of course integrity, which is why we are all here and have a special election. So again, thank you, and enjoy the evening.
Thank you. Patrick Nayland.
Thanks again. Yeah, I, that sentiment as well. I, I think that any person up here, and I don't envy you having to pick just one of us. I already voted, you know, so I'm exempt from that. I would just like to reiterate, as I mentioned, I have a strong community-based founding in my lifetime. As you've heard me speak tonight, I can pretty much at the drop of a hat, get up, get people together, get people motivated. This is what I was doing, as I mentioned, downtown, when I was helping clean up after the unrest that occurred there. I was basically pulling people together, getting them away from unsafe buildings. A city engineer told me, we need to move people. I got them together, getting people to blockade certain areas, direct traffic, things like that. And it's just my genuine love of people and wanting to get things going and moving, not to boss anybody around, but where there is a, somebody needs to step up and get people together and get them motivated, I'm that guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas Harris.
First, thank you all for the opportunity to address at least a few of your questions tonight. To anyone who may not have had their question answered, I'd love to hear from you. You can find more information about me and my goals as your potential representative with the city. I have a website at harrisforward1, it's the number four, number one, dot com. I'd love to hear from you either in person, stick around for a little while afterwards, or via email. I do my best to understand where you're coming from, hear your concerns, and answer, respond as best as I can. So thank you again to the League of Women Voters, CCX Media for hosting us, and Jackie, our moderator, and everyone who attended or at least submitted questions for this evening. I appreciate your consideration and humbly ask for your vote on November 8.
Thank you. Raymond Blackledge.
Yes, thanks again for this forum. I think it's important to have opportunities to connect and just to be able to meet the candidates, and this is a great way of doing that. And I don't know if I conveyed this well enough, but one thing I'm really excited about is being able to listen. Meeting neighbors has been really exciting and being able to talk to people and hear about what their needs are. And what's really awesome in Robinsdale as well, too, I think that's one thing that we haven't been able to chance to talk about really, is we're always talking about the, what, what we need versus what we have currently. And so I think that's the one thing that I want to continue to also spread and be mindful and cognizant of. You can definitely check me out more on raymondblackledge.com. So it's my first name, last name, dot com, about what I'm about, and what I'm looking forward to doing for Robinsdale as well, and working and partnering with the city and the community to do that. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you all.
Thank you. Noah Corkman.
Thanks again, everyone, for attending and for giving you the time to listen to us tonight. All of us candidates here appreciate your time. I think no matter what you vote, as long as you do vote, that's the biggest thing. Make sure you do, get out there and vote, because your voice is heard, whether you think it or not. And like I said, either one of us candidates want to represent you. That's why we're up here. Thank you for your time. Thank you for everything.
Well, I'd like to thank these candidates for, for the primary election for Ward 1 on the Robinsdale City Council, and also thank our viewing audience in person and online. Now we'll hear from the League of Women Voters, Crystal New Hope, East Plymouth, Robinsdale, President Patsy Green for some closing comments.
Thank you, Jackie. Yes, thank you to the candidates for participating. It's nice when you all show up. Thank you, Jackie, for moderating for us, and to CCX Media for recording this and broadcasting it. As was said, the election will be held on Tuesday, November 8, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and early voting has begun. If you need to vote by absentee ballot, you can get an absentee ballot application by calling your Robinsdale City Office, or request one online at robinsdalemn.com/absentee, or at mnvotes.org, minnesotavotes.org. Voters have until October 18th to register in advance of the general election to have your name in the polls. Go to vote411, vote411.org or mnvotes.com to register online. You will need your driver's license or the last four digits of your social number to do that. You may register at the polls if you have been a resident of the state for at least 20 days and have proof of that residency, or have a registered voter with you to vouch for you. If a member of this cable TV audience feels an issue has not been adequately addressed, League of Women Voters urges you to contact the candidates directly. The League of Women Voters encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influence public policy through education and advocacy. Membership is open to men and women ages 16 and up. For more information, visit www.lwcnhepr.org, which stands for League of Women Voters, Crystal New Hope, East Plymouth, Robinsdale. As I've said at every forum, yes, we have the longest name of any league in the state. Again, tonight's forum will be available on ccxmedia.org and soon at League of Women Voters website and Facebook page. Thank you all and have a good evening.[1787.73][1787.73][applause] Thank you.